Well, five o'clock and we're blocking the wall so it's eight o'clock, so let's call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was much, that was much better than online. I tell you what, good job. Okay. I'll just make mention previous to starting the agenda, um, since we're shooting on, uh, you know, when everything's in the middle here, we have microphones up front to pick everything up, but in, in the crowd, if you're going to participate, obviously during your section, just speak up loudly so everyone can, so the mics can pick you up. That way everyone will know what's going on. Otherwise it might be kind of fuzzy, but, uh, and then if, you know, we have a lot of people in the room, but if any more people come in a lot to kind of make sure we just keep spread out as best we can and we keep going, so. But that will move on to minutes. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Do we have any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the bills with additional bills on our desks, I believe.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion, any other work? Okay. And open the discussion. Roll call please.
Brett.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Olson.
Right.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye.
Motion carries. Financials. Anything out of the ordinary?
No, I think Chris Roger and I are the only ones spending the money. Mine, oh yeah, Kevin, yeah, I'm sorry. Otherwise it's quiet.
The one thing I will only mention of previous to motion is that we're, um, we talked about it in our last social services meeting, we're going to have to keep an eye on the indirect bills because the indirect bill costs are coming in higher than anticipated, so we might have to make up some difference at the end of the year depending on how this keep coming in, so there's something to keep an eye on. Other than that, any questions? Now that didn't feel a motion approved.
So, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the financials, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Treasurer's checks.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the latter, excuse me, treasurer's checks. Questions, further discussion. Please take forward. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Oh, roll call. Yes, it's a million, roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye.
Motion carries, Stephen. Yes, of course. Approval of the agenda, the only thing we have to add is we have to put Chris in, so we'll put Tim, emergency manager, under Sarah, if that was okay.
Move to adopt the agenda as amended.
Okay, their motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright. Close same sign. I'm moving too quick, I'm sorry. Guys are all this busy looking at stuff. Katie, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Um, it's my understanding that my letter of resignation has been distributed to the county commission. I am going to be moving to warmer climates, that's why I'm leaving. Um, looking at going south, I've got kids spread across the country, so I'm looking forward to spending more time with them. My resignation will, uh, my last day was coming would be August 31st, so it'd be effective September 1st. And I also included my, uh, in my letter, my end of term is not till December 41st of 2021. And so I would also like to give a recommendation for the appointment of a recorder to fulfill my term. And my recommendation would be about Buckmeyer, my current deputy that I have been working with for the past year.
Very sad to find out that you're leaving us.
Well, thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, we're very, very grateful for all of the service that you've done for this county and we wish you all the best as you, I mean, we know we'll see you a couple more times before you hit the old dusty trail, but.
And I'm very thankful to the county, my 20 years here have been wonderful. This is a great place to work, commissions, all the commissioners through the years have always been good to me. And so I really appreciate, um, being able to serve in this capacity for the last 20 years. And to the citizens of the county who elected me, um, I really appreciate their confidence in me and allowed me to stay for so long.
Job well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Very honorable, awesome county. I'm just happy for you, you get to go where there's a job to set.
Yes, this winter was the last straw.
Completely understand. Okay, uh, this discussion amongst the commission, I guess we would have to accept the early name. So unless we don't want to. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Further discussion.
Thank you for your service. Yes, and in the behalf of the people around the county.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, don't want to vote, right, it's a kind of vote. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries and, uh, reservation is accepted. Uh, I guess then the next order of business would be, um, if we, if we're going to appoint, uh, excuse me, appoint a new reporter today, or if you want to take some timeline, depending on how the commission feels, we have, you know, Katie's technically her, or is not, is here until August 31st, so. What would be the wishes of the commission as a whole?
Are we, are we able to prematurely appoint?
That's a good question.
The commission has to make a motion, um, to appoint, that's begun in writing, once it's agreed upon, we can certainly take some time. If on date is, uh, we don't have to wait.
But, but it, but it can happen before the end date, Katie said that.
Well, right, it, it needs to happen before.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah. We would appoint if that gets September 1st.
Yes.
So we are. Discussion? Lots, comments?
I guess since there's that far readout, we could, uh, read in, uh, that little film we're going by session for agenda, maybe take some time to digest.
We take a motion to table.
Yeah. We have a motion to table and second, first, well, this is not a discussion, a table and motion. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Table. Thank you guys, appreciate it. Okay, Crystal, good morning.
Good morning. So I haven't, um, been in a commission meeting for a while, so I thought I'd just kind of update you on HR, what's been happening in HR. Um, the whole COVID thing, we're double counting phone calls from employees. They had concerns, you know, like working from home, or working from home, there's a lot of anxiety for some. Um, that got referred to in our EAP. Um, there's been conflict issues with dealing with different, you know, they have different levels of concerns with COVID-19. Um, some take it real serious, some take it medium serious, some don't think it's anything. So there's been different levels tend to cause conflict. So been dealing with that, um, I've heard a lot of, from employees, they'd want to come back to work, but they want to make sure that the commission has a good plan in place, so they feel safe coming back to work. They either have underlying health condition themselves, or they live with somebody with underlying health conditions, so they they really just want to make sure that there's a good plan in place where they'll feel safe coming to work, and especially things, um, in the fall may get worse, so that's just, there are some of the concerns I've been hearing, so. Um, other things that have been happening, department head meetings, trying to keep the communication open. We moved to every two weeks now to go after your commissioner meetings. Um, just to see where everybody's at, make sure everybody's got the communication from the commissioner meeting. Some of the other things that I've been doing on my end is a lot of employment webinars, to make sure that, um, they understand what our employer, as an employer, what our responsibility is dealing with all that COVID-related, um, employment law changes. Um, yeah, that's kind of, that's kind of just a quick update from HR side.
Okay. Any questions? There are nothing, thanks guys, okay, we're getting. Is Sarah on the, oh, who goes here for Sarah?
I'm a Sarah guy.
You don't look like Sarah.
Nope, hardly not. No, she apologizes for not being here, her hubby, they planned for a family weekend in the lake, and her hubby got called the part of her for that, um, protest, um, incident that happened down there in our home lake, so she took out today and left, so I'm, I'm a killer. Um, we are still at NDSU guidelines, meaning 10 people or less at any event, no matter parents, no matter who it is. Uh, so we are proceeding that way until we get further guidance, you know, we'd let people say, well, Governor Borghum has changed that, and NDSU doesn't want to follow that guideline, so we're still at 10. And last night we started our first shotgun training, and 10 is the maximum, so we try to keep it at eight or nine. Parents aren't allowed to get out of the vehicle, down and out. Okay? So with the guidelines that we have set forth so far, we have come up with a new, um, achievement day. We postponed our achievement days, and our new achievement days now will be during the week of the state fair because they canceled the state fair, so we're going to use that week. And we're going to have the horse show on the 17th and 18th of July. Two day, I'll explain this second, why the, why the two day thing. The livestock show will be the 20th and 21st, that's our Monday, Tuesday. And the static exhibit part of that will be the 23rd and 24th. Um, because our horse numbers have grown so much, uh, we can't get everybody to be there at the same time, and we have to maintain that social distancing of six feet and the rule of 10 people or less. So we're gonna, we, we are working on some strategies to get this all in place, so everybody will be able to participate. It was our, I'm sorry, commissioner, wait, there'll, um, it's our intent to make sure that all the kids have that opportunity to participate. You know, we've been working all year for this, and with the COVID that came, kind of put a little kink in things, but they still own that with Zoom, so they still have their meetings and all that kind of stuff, so. That's what we're proceeding with right now, is those dates for our Ramsey County Achievement Day. Um, we're going to have some kinks in it, but I think everybody's been pretty understanding of what has happened, that they're going to be okay with it when we get done. We've visited with advisory council, the Fair Board, uh, making sure it's all good on all levels. Okay? Um, we've been also having many, mini camps coming up, and again, 10 or less. And in fact, Cindy and Sarah have one today out at Peterson Arena, and we have kids that want to participate, but we have to break it up into two groups, so instead of them having one session a day, they're going to end up having two sessions a day. So their day gets kind of mixed up on our end, but that's okay, we're, we're doing that. Cindy and I are pretty much back in the office, um, except for my vote, or your vote, to Collinwood, just about every afternoon. I worked at home for six weeks, and I tell you what, I hated it. I wound up taking just about two full weeks of, of vacation in the afternoons because I couldn't stay focused. And I got myself back to work there. I think it's bold. Uh, our farmer friends are busy out there, there's going to be a lot of PPD, uh, others are trying to get out of the damn fields, they're tremendously wet yet, um, I don't know what to say about the farming situation here, except that it's going to be quite odd as well. So that's a really brief update, there was lots of other stuff, but I don't need to take your time, but if you have any questions of us, we are trying to proceed ahead with all of our corn stuff, that's, that's our main goal, is to get the kids so that they feel like they've accomplished something for the year. We're still going to go through with judging, premiums, we're going to do everything like we have. And we've got judges lined up, they're, we could come and do this for us. We're going to cost us a little bit more for overnight stay, because we got one judge coming from, um, House South of mine, out to the one show, and we got another one coming from Morehead, Minnesota, uh, for the other one, so it's going to cost a little bit more, but, um, we're there to try to help the kids, get through this.
Yeah, questions? I, I have one question, would you guys be open to like sponsorships to help on overnight stays, stuff like that?
Um, I'm sure that the Fair Board pays most of that, and I'm sure the Fair Board, Fair Board would be.
Yep, that's true.
Yep. You know, because of the COVID thing this year, it's, we've also talked about, um, different sponsorships and, and those kinds of things. And you know, our businesses in general are struggling, right, not trying to recover back from this. So we're trying to figure out some ways that maybe we can circumvent maybe a little bit of that, but we're still working hard.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. Now you got, did you have a girl? Chris? Morning.
Morning.
I already said good morning, you were good.
Well, I'm handing out some information for you guys. Just a quick update on what I've been working on. As we've been.
Yep.
While my department's been working on, uh, the COVID stuff, trying to, trying to get, uh, trying to get, uh, all the paperwork together, Katie, I've been working a lot on, uh, getting everything set for us so we can hopefully apply for a grant, get some reimbursement stuff accomplished. Uh, what I handed out to you is another thing I just got done, did a tabletop exercise with the law enforcement center, that's the after action, uh, report. So able to get some money kickback to the, to the county for, for my, part of my, part of my duties too. So I just figured, if you guys want to read through it, it's just some, just a good information on the exercise that we did at the law enforcement center. Uh, also I have, uh, next is a, is a map, it's a Google map image. Uh, this one brought to my attention yesterday. Our, uh, tower, it says is where, is located south of Webster, so, um, on removing the tower up by Towner County and moving into the Webster Tower, they found out that the GPS coordinates don't match, which affects our FCC license. So, uh, I was in contact with, uh, John from Jamestown Communication. Um, he's the one that's actually working on getting the tower from Towner County back down to Webster, and then found out that we had a little bit of a tower issue, uh, for location wise. So he suggested that we actually redo the licensing to get that corrected, so we don't incur any fines. Uh, he says it was done 30, 40 years ago, I actually made, I've made a lot of phone calls, I know I'm under, quite new when that tower was erected, um, but the licensing on it too is only a 20-foot tower, and we know it's more than 20-foot. So we gotta at least get that changed, the rhetoric was wrong, maybe it's someone mistakenly chipped the one. So, um, just to give a heads up, it's going to be about four, um, about $500 to completely get that turned around and back on track, and he'll do all the licensing for us and everything, since he was working with Star from the law enforcement center. That's what we all got. For 40 years ago, I'm surprised they were as close as they were. I'm exactly what you're now.
There were no GPS coordinates at that point, it was rods and nothing, it was done. Alright, very good, thanks Chris.
Yep.
Happened to build it, then, can you knock it over 10 minutes, Kevin?
Sure, try it.
Alright.
First of all, on the bill, I guess maybe I sort of spoke up earlier, but the one, there's one on there from Top Z Manufacturing for the three rates that we got. I don't know if I should have a separate motion or, so.
Second.
Motion and second to pay for the rates from the government, further discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
And I got from the gym. Okay, some project updates, uh, we did get our paper patching done, uh, late last week, so. Um, if anybody's had a chance to look, I mean, they turned out pretty nice. Came in underwriting, so. Uh, we did some hand patching on that wood block, we didn't actually do a paper patches. And then there's five, Eric too, did some hand patching, but it turned out pretty good.
How's that on the floor there, like, 12, 13 there? I was making a screw on that, could've.
Yeah. Any other questions on the paper patch?
Congratulations on being done and underwriting that, those two words together, maybe a good thing.
Alright. Okay, then our fill list over there, Range Two, we were hoping to have it started by now, but it keeps getting pushed back for whatever reason. And by now we're thinking of starting today or tomorrow. Today or tomorrow we'll be starting, we're late on that. Any questions there? Mangwater, remember we're supposed to start that today, but that got pushed back all the way, so. And that won't take long, that's just a one day project. About five spots, I'll make sure we got it. Uh, the Northeast Regional Water District, uh, Cavalier, uh, to go to disaster permission to board a two-inch water tanker around the county line up in Royal Township. Uh, just a little bit east of Bot Mack, he's on, uh, along PD8 Avenue. As long as they're going to board it, I don't have any problem with it, so I guess it's okay to do, I think I could see a motion.
Move to second.
Okay, motion to second to allow for water line board, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign.
Um, we need to, we're starting to do our, fix our soft spot stuff, putting ready, cement into the soft spots, we need to rent the second skid steer for that. And that'll be about two weeks of work, and it's 100, or $1,300 a week for iron high, that would, that's run for a week if you did it, I don't.
So that's a bell's ringing, Tom.
So.
Under the driver.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, uh, to, for a second skid steer. Further discussion. Uh, not paying for it, I guess, so we, we just want some, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries.
And then also, we haven't started yet, but our bridge removals will need to rent a bigger excavator and a trench packer, and the cost on those are $2,500 a month for the excavator, $2,200 a month for the trench packer, and it's going to be six to eight weeks for that rental, so we've got four bridges and two big culverts next to these here. So I think we should go ahead with that.
Motion to approve. Second.
The motion is second, further discussion.
The driver's very dear.
No. Well, it's a fortune.
$4,500 a month, probably. You know, we're not super here, that's, that's what it's just about.
I don't know, like, who knows, pretty good.
$14,000 on that block, kept it.
Okay. Further discussion, further motion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All votes. Motion carries.
And of course, we still have our road limits on, um, I visited with the surrounding counties around us, Grant Forks, Trail, and South of there, Trail, the Downhanger, and they took theirs off already. Um, Walsh, Edna, and Nelson were going to discuss it for me today, like we are, and I guess we never got to come, so the tower Cavalier, but I don't know, the roads are pretty tender out there yet, but farmers are moving, so. I guess I would maybe suggest taking them off for a long morning, but I don't know, what do you guys think?
Highway drop.
All highways are off, all state highways are off.
They're going to take. Did you say farmer or?
Uh, farmers are moving, they're, they call every day because they want to get their fertilizer seed. And, and like I said, there are some really, really bad soft spots out there on the township system, county stuff. So I know that the chunks are going to suffer when we take ours off, but.
I think the damage has already been done.
Probably hasn't.
I think they're starting to heal.
Yeah, they are starting to heal, I just didn't drive with it.
Yeah, I'm better than that.
Okay. Motion, I'll give a motion, okay? I'll second that. The motion is second to the road limits, further discussion.
I think we'll be following the rest of the surrounding counties, please, so.
That's just one of those friends who are a month late.
And everybody is, uh, and then, I guess, or, we could be on the tip of the iceberg.
Okay, further discussion, we have the motion to, uh, the road board. So we move further discussion, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries.
There's one other thing I want to mention, the, uh, news article out of Minnesota where they're, um, drilling holes in these soft spots, those roads are drilled, like a big 10-inch hole down through the soft spot and filled with P rock, quite a ways down, like to the waterline or something, depending on where the waters at, of course. And then filled with P rock, and then all the water is theoretically supposed to rain down through that, so get rid of the water. That's the issue, is the water is sitting there. So just put the idea in your head that that's another possible way of fixing these soft spots. We don't have a postal digger or anything like that, but I think Walsh County is going to try a couple on there, just to see how it works. Just something new, number two on the two blocks.
A big, a little?
Yep, down, pass across line.
It's almost like you're creating like, isn't it called a French drain? When they have like the, the P rock type, it's like a drain field under the road thing.
Yep. Down through the soft spot, actually, not, not under the road, but.
Yeah, through the soft spot. That's really interesting.
30-foot area, you put in, out of others on there?
Yeah, if I don't, you know, like every four or five feet apart or something, you have a soft spot.
He's a hydro.
And like a postal digger on a skid steer or something like that.
Get the, get the surface water, then drop down all the way to the bottom of the road, that way underneath that.
The farm, we, we would have to rent the equipment, if we wanted to try one, but might be another idea.
Get iron high, you throw in the.
Yeah, that's good, that's good.
And if it's not going to work, then we can purchase one, you know, the rest, I expect.
Get them up for it.
Well. Uh, that's interesting. Okay, any else, Kevin?
No.
Very good, thank you. I'm going to wait a minute. Is there anything else? You know what, let's jump on, let's just do some quick stuff. Uh, raffle permits.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve raffle permits, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Site authorization.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Uh, letter of support for the Renaissance Zone, the city just tested, we're going for the Renaissance, still for that. That's why we would get.
Second.
Motion is second, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries, and letter transfer.
Sorry.
Motion is second, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Look at that, more things in life, very, very, okay, I mean, we're at the top here, you okay with that?
Yeah.
We're rolling around a lot. I need, I gotta get, I gotta get that, that'll be. Okay, uh, with that, it's 8:30, we'll move into the county tax equalization meeting. The, uh, we have to, uh, we have to, uh, make a motion to adjourn and then, okay?
Move to adjourn.
And so, and then reconvene, correct, is that okay?
And then reconvene.
Yeah, and reconvene, it's, uh, it's the word county tax equalization, we have a motion, do we have a second? Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries, and we are now. Motion carries, and we are now convened as the county equalization board. Um, we have this nice folder, probably. And it's got, um, the recommended agenda and everything. Uh, that's gonna take over from here, I guess.
I just wanted to double check the state of the.
Is it okay if you guys move up right here, just because we're so far away? So we can hear you a little bit better?
And the camera's concealed.
Yeah, unless you wanna scream, you can scream if it was like, I guess. Right back, perfect. Yeah, I couldn't hear you very well, I'm kind of, I'm kind of deaf, so. If one of you were still social distancing correctly, uh, your lung would just go down here, it would be okay.
Just wanted to double check that if anyone was calling in, that.
Just Bob.
Just Bob, okay.
Okay. Come on. Very good.
And then before I said, I said you wanna, um, say that Terry retired. And you're consulting for the city now, and you're listening to everything, but I think that he's a consultant for me too. And now Mark is the new city assessor, is that the, the role?
I know why I was thinking that day, I appreciate that. Well, congratulations to both of you.
Yeah, so there's this change there, but I'm really glad to have you here today.
Having here, you gotta stick around as a consultant for a while, it's gonna be helpful to, to us and the county halls, I think. His years of experience are, are important.
Definitely, and I know that we work really well together, so he's always helpful. Uh, so I guess with that, we'll start, um, with the city assessments. I'm not sure if Mark is presenting today, or.
No, I get one last meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Well, welcome, Gary.
Thank you. And they, and so I have retired my first, and I agree to help out with this act for my. Any questions, and I'm ready for state board equalization, for the city, representing the cities. Uh, we've got the fact that the city, or the city commission, and the city board of equalization. Uh, there's a number up in the right-hand side corner, that if I refer you to the page number, that's a page. The, uh. City equalization meeting, basically, we have one protest by writing. Owners of the Kmart. And, and we get reappraised, and the properties that we had reappraised, lowered it to what? The crazy event that they indicated was, was the thing that was. Uh. So the requests were, were reappraised, but the owner had fixed the place, we did not, they denied the order. He was asking for a lot of that, and all that. Uh, that was the only protest that we had. And I, I don't know that they followed up. They would have had applied to the county next, and they reindicated that, to then, to let our correspondents. They did, they had an opportunity, if they wanted to. We'll just go through it quickly. Uh. A lot of the first fifteen pages are just kind of stuff that I give the city commission. Goes through their duties as the board equalization, and our duties as the assessor. Do things like that. Page fourteen is where we actually show this our largest, uh, changes in value from two thousand and eight to twenty twenty. Anything with a, had to have a change over ten thousand dollars for us to place it in. So the changes are either minus or plus, the city, there's a few. For the top, the Kmart owners, about six down. We lowered it to two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars compared to the million. The rest of those are, there was no real super large changes this year, we didn't have a lot of large, large properties. Through a lot of years. So. If you turn to page seventeen. In the middle of the page, here it talks about the two thousand nineteen sales ratio of medium commercial property, it was at ninety-one point seven. State allows us to be, on an average, between ninety and one hundred, or within that. Within that range as well. For us, it's, it didn't task us to do a reappraisal. So at ninety-one point seven, we didn't need too many market adjustments. We did a lot of reappraisal, we're seeing the properties and stuff, so with the new, with the, uh, new changes. Uh, our new range made it ninety-two point six. Before we get up with our commercial property. A lot of times we're trying to keep it between ninety-three, ninety-five, rate of interest. And in, uh, our sales ratio of our residential property came in at eighty-nine point three. So we made a decision to do a market adjustment of five percent. That took us up to about, so we took all residential property up five percent. Our new, uh, equalization, or our new percentage came in at ninety-three point eight for those changes. We're just, just between ninety-three and ninety-four percent on that, which will be fine. We hadn't done a market increase. On the residential property for two years prior. So we kinda got. We, we kinda had to do a district, we just had, we had to make those market changes, so to keep us within that line. Uh, the new totals are in the next column down. With the tips, and with all the tips. Tips are the taxes, the taxes within finance districts. Where the city agrees to a district, or the taxes within that district. The additional taxes within that district will pay for the new projects. So we have at this point about forty million dollars, forty million dollars of value in our tip districts. As those bonds are paid off, and the tips are retired, that'll come on board for just the general property business. So, uh, with the tips, our total valuation, including commercial and residential, is four hundred and thirty-four billion. The tips are about forty, forty million, so we're at three ninety-four. Page eighteen kinda gives you a history of where the city, and this is some city stuff. Where the city has gone since two thousand and one. We've, we've had some good years where we increased seventy-eight percent, ten percent in value, overall value. And we had some other ones where we were barely, we weren't even one percent. But it has been a slow, steady growth, evaluations of things. There's a couple in charge there, and we just illustrate, uh, through, through a rap, or within valuations. The, uh, starting on page twenty-one, if you're interested, the tip districts, basically, those were the tip districts. California Nagasi Island, and a couple of those, Stonebridge, those are all of them. Smith's, uh, Ternago, and the Malls. Uh. There wasn't a lot of change in it, most of these districts have already been developed. Ninety-nine percent of the buildable area on most of them has already been built on, so that they're, they're almost at their full capacity, but we gotta produce some act. They are, they're all funding themselves at this point. According to Jerry Johnson, our administrator, the tips, the tips are, are working, they're, they're funding. So as they get paid off, that will come off in a new value, lower in general tax, instead of what it is. Uh, the total this year, the total change this year was only about two, two point five million. That includes commercial and residential, some of these tip districts are residential districts, some of them are completely commercial districts. Pages that follow them are just each district, they're all down on a per parcel basis, for evaluating. Up to page thirty-one, thirty-one starts off, these are the disabled veterans that have applied for, uh, receiving. Property tax. Rate. That was approved, the page thirty-two. Thirty-two and thirty-three are the tax, thirty-two are the tax exempt properties, that's all like the churches and cheerables. That get a tax exemption, give a lot of those. Page thirty-three is a line exemption. Of one percent in that category. And then the twenty-twenty home state credit applications, that's our senior citizens, mostly. That's downed a little bit, last year we had about ninety-three, this year we have eighty-five, which is not a little bit each year. And we have, uh, three new home exemptions, and the city gives a, uh. Two-year exemption for just seventy-five thousand dollars of the market value of new residential homes. And we have three in the mirror that were approved. The only catch with those is, is like all of the new stuff in the tip district, they can't get it, because. The tip district needs to generate tax dollars, so you can't exempt it and give it to the different districts. So anybody that's building within the tip district wouldn't qualify for the seventy-five thousand dollar, uh, residential exemption. I guess I don't have a lot more than that, uh. In the year, the years. Have slowed down a little bit, the valuation. I mean, we had a lot of years where we had twenty million dollars of new construction in the city. Last few years, we've had about five million. So the growth is, the growth doesn't, it'll, it'll be ongoing, you know, if you look back through the history. But we have been losing, we have been losing that. Our properties, if you look at our residential, our properties, they continue to grow in value. It's not like we're declining, it's, it's not moving as fast as we get. Any questions?
Questions? Good job, Brandon.
Thank you. This is my, uh, thirty-third meeting.
And pretty.
Not county, the county, the county did this before.
And I, I, I actually appreciate what you did. I started this with the county in nineteen eighty-two, where it ended, it was abstract. They hired me as the price advisor. So I only for five years, de-lap showed, and thereafter, I became the abstractor. Think about the second, first second year up here. And then the seven, city would be amazing, so they're over there all time.
Okay? Okay.
Well, thank you for your years of dedication and commitment to, uh, the county, I very much appreciate it. I would go ahead and make a motion to approve the, uh, city assessments as presented.
Okay. Motion to the second.
Second.
Okay, have a second, further discussion. Hearing none, all favorable by saying aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign? Motion carries. Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Um, okay, then we go over to Beth.
All right, uh, next would be pages two through four. That are, once again, larger changes, um, in the county. We do reassess each property, so these would be including ten percent or three thousand dollars that occurred. Uh, you do see some minuses, uh, we did, some of them would include, we did, um, remove eighteen farm residences from the tax rolls. Without the new qualifications. And, um, we also added five homes that would be a positive to, for the same reason, people related, sold, people that weren't farm owners, or different reasons like that. Um, those are all included in there. Uh, as far as, our sales ratio came at eighty-nine point nine, it's, it's continuing to increase each year, so that's good. Um, with reassessment and the changes to the H, we probably come in around ninety-three percent, ninety-two, ninety-three. Uh, most homeowners would say a one to ten percent increase this year. Aside from some that were reassessed for other reasons. And that is on, um, that, so it would be just to approve these values that they go to the township and make.
Yeah. And motion to approve the, just all township values then, or?
Township, it's a city, city's, and our, that letter.
Questions, I guess, first, now with that.
It's also in this list is, um, kinda going on the D of the motion. Uh, I do have if there are any large changes for the township or cities that provide their own assessors. Those are located within there also. And their folks can have all the free, by the townships or cities also. Mike Emmer is, he is one of the assessors that we have left still, I don't know if Mike had any say, or if he were just scared. But his values are in there also, so he could be asking also to approve, um, the values of Mike and Errol, the townships and assessors. Assessing.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the values as presented.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve the township values as presented, further discussion. All favorable by saying aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign? Motion carries.
All right, we got to page slide fifty-nine, and you've seen this before, it's basically the same, pretty kind of added, uh, meaning that I would have. Um, and that is the commercial values as provided by Grand Guard, uh, for the commercial, the two hundred and forty-four parcels for revaluation.
Further discussion, I guess, on motion values, if there's questions for that.
Uh, the values were moved by the cities and townships at their meetings. And also the city that was likely to have a handful, or, I mean, ten or twelve, would have done, uh, and sort of.
Pardon me, it's, it's a hard one, I need to read.
I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve the commercial values as provided by Grand Guard, right, so.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second, further discussion on the motion. What percentage of increase are we on there?
These parcels themselves actually was around on the last page, thirty-two, percent. Thirty, no, thirty-one, sorry.
And I know, I, I brought it up when we were in the Zoom meeting, but with a lot of these parcels, you know, the gentleman made a good point that, that. They're functionally getting tax break versus what their real value was, but I still feel a little punitive, it wasn't their fault. Their properties weren't valued correctly, it was the county's fault. Uh, and it does seem like a lot of.
Uh, and it does seem like a lot of increase to drop on people, so I just feel it might be worth mentioning again, you know, if there's some solution here on doing a step increase over a year or two or three to get up to the right values. I know that's probably unusual, and there's probably a reason we don't do it that way, but it seems to me like it's worth discussing.
I think when I, you know, you say fault, I don't know, it would just slowly get to county, maybe one of the major things was the location change, and we've lost all our assessors, you know, and that just made it so.
And I don't, I don't mean to, uh, let's say fault in terms of ascribing blame. What I mean to say is, is that if there is a responsibility for having correct and accurate assessments, it's the responsibility of, of the county now, I understand there's many reasons why it's impossible to, to do it as well as we should, but it just seems unfortunate, you know, that we're looking at, and I saw a couple of properties in here that went up by almost a million dollars. Assessed valuation in here, that's plausible.
Further discussion, question?
Were there problems, levels in the state, that?
Ten percent, it was about ten percent.
What's the value that we don't stay within that?
They will, um, increase our value, or lower our value, whichever direction it was, they tried to get around twenty percent. And as a process of, you know, we can choose which properties, so, you know, they are over that, apparently, they would see what they put on. Um, and also we include some properties that are included, and that's what we do in the middle of the play box, that under the water, they would see that same increase on some of those properties.
So it would be very bad, we basically see, control everything.
It would be very bad, yeah, I'd like to find some solution that doesn't include that.
Am I, am I looking at this one running, Beth, very, right here, the very last page, Waste Management North Dakota Incorporated, went from a hundred, a hundred thousand dollar valuation to almost two hundred thousand dollar valuation? Is that?
Right, they went to two eighty.
What, what, um, would you help me understand what I'm looking at in terms of the slashes in the middle there?
On the, on the third line, it has that.
Well, see, where, where you've got a, a number there and then a slash, is that?
Like a hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred.
Yeah, you mean, you mean the, the little numbers?
Yeah, so if I'm looking.
It's, it's total increase year-over-year percentage of increase compared to each property value period. So like, for instance, down that Waste Management line you're looking at, that's the portion at the top, so it went up a hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred dollars, which is then, which is eighty-two point five two percent of previous value. It was an eighty-two percent increase on property valuation.
So, right, but the, the Waste Management one here is actually, it looks like three hundred and twenty-three percent increase?
That's the one, but, or, that's the camp. That went from nineteen to different.
Okay. Okay, well, your friends, right?
Yeah, right now, if you remind me correctly, we discussed this, we're at seventy-three point something, correct, on our sale ratio?
Seventy-three point six.
Seventy-three point six, so essentially, if we do nothing, the state's gonna come in and step us up twenty percent across the board. And it's gonna be twenty percent on people that, under this reevaluation from Vanguard, that are going down, or going up, or anything, everybody's gonna get a twenty percent bump. So that's, at least in my mind, unacceptable. So then you come back to the question of, is there some type of way to, to incrementally increase, uh, instead of doing it all in one shot? You know, we're still saying that we, we believe, you know, believing that the values are correct, you know, then the question is, how do you, can you step your way into it? I, I was learning something last night, looking at it, I, I think there's a way to do it, but I don't know how, you could do it perfectly, once, but it's that way, you know, I think it would be kind of messy, to say the least.
We have a good scrum of copy for that, for sure.
Hell.
The reason you're probably not here today. I would guess, is that they were gonna stomach, I guess, whatever we do. I know it's, that's all, you know, I'll take part of the blame for not keeping our evaluations up to date. When they, um, they touched since oh three. And we cut Vanguard loose, and, uh, didn't commercial property. I just don't know how to answer, I don't think it all on, about the state coming back, and just do it, and they probably don't like that either. But how we done which would be a bit of an increase. I don't know how to answer, I mean, we've tried lowering that percentage, and the state comes back and make sure we're in a tolerant level.
Well, I guess the, the question, I guess it's a twofold question in my mind, so, is the question of, do we think the values that Vanguard is presenting are correct?
Maybe not this particular year, I don't, maybe last year, maybe three years from now, I'd say yes. But this particular year, after, I mean, people are going through. No.
No, and it's hard, because a lot's had over the first, come twenty, so it's last year's obvious.
And that's probably related to your, oh, it's too, it's crazy. I mean, I looked at the ones that Vanguard appraised in town versus the ones they did out in the country, out in the county. The ones in town that were previously appraised were done by city staff, correct, and Vanguard came in and stepped it, so that means there were two different sets of eyes on them, they walked in the same way to your properties in the city that they did the county. And with not knowing what the valuation was, not knowing anything from anything, they just walked in and valued it, and they were within, on, for instance, the leading edge building, they were within point three one percent. Which means that.
That's a new value.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, we're within.
They just take somewhere, equation, figure a commercial value, and then put it on there, I mean.
Well, I know, but then, doesn't that, doesn't.
Question, they can get pretty close on that one.
But, well, I know, but I'll say.
It's an older problem there, that was a problem.
Yeah, and I don't necessarily disagree with that, but I'm just saying, it's, the, the question is, if, 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 if there, if there's different sets of eyes on it, and the values are close, then that must mean that they, they're in the ballpark at least. They're not necessarily perfect, I rec, I recognize that fact, but they gotta be in the ballpark. The question is, is then, you know, how do you incrementally make a change, do you want to incrementally make a change? Yeah, and I, I agree with you on that one, the only thing I could come around to is, like you said, on that, on that list we have in front of us, it was thirty-nine percent change, but there are some things that used to have to be pulled out, correct? That came down to, that weren't there, not pulled out, but there were a couple of things that, basically, if we adopt the change as addressed here, we would get to a hundred and one, we would basically be full a hundred percent value.
There's some other properties within the township list that I have to do on the parcel, at the start, and some forty blocks, and that would, we're even with it.
Yeah, that's. Yeah. Yeah, that's right, yeah, that's true. So we're basically at a hundred percent value if we accept the values in front of us. That's the five percent. So, we can, we can say that the values are right, but still at the same time, say you're gonna go to, you stay within tolerance. You wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't have to go to one hundred percent of tolerance, because we, we do tolerance, you know, we stay within that ninety to a hundred on anything else. So that could be an option, but then how do you hypothetically go and make that change, percentage-wise on all properties, is the question.
We're hooked.
Well, to a blank, yes. I mean, if, if we don't do it, the state.
Yeah, we won't like that.
I mean, it's basically. Yeah, and we're not gonna like it if the state, that's just, that's it.
Yeah, sad, but the, uh, you know, and the reason the city wanted to get our properties looked at was, you know, there was some, some, be similar new properties, talk about the implements and some things like that. We wanted to be sure that, that if they were revaluing the county stuff, we wanted to make sure that we were in line, so that all, all managed. And, uh, yeah, our, we had actually two or three properties in town that went down, the elevator, the old key mark building, uh, and the old sneaker cellar, a few of those. And our implements, uh, yeah, they were within just a few percent. So, I mean, because if, everybody's part of the county, with business in the city versus outside of the city, they all pay accounting taxes. And we wanted to make sure that you, we weren't overcharging, we're undercharging a lot of the cities. You know, it is, it is, it's not easy to tell somebody that their property went double. I guess I look at it more on the, um, look at it more like their exemption is running out, and they're gonna start paying the full amount. It may not ease a lot, but I mean, basically, they, they got some type of exemption. For whatever reason, and that is running out, just like when we give a five-year property tax exemption for Renaissance, it's zero for five years, but they know at the end of five years that they're going to pull out. In this case, you just, this is the end, we didn't know the end was coming, but it's here now.
It's quick.
And now the exemption is over, and you gotta pay your fair share. It's difficult, but I think you did the right thing. And Beth did the right thing, the county did the right thing, they seen there was a problem. They looked at it, they hired somebody that could remedy it, give you a solution to it, lay product to you, which I think the county did great, and honestly, they did.
Just following it, that's, it's very helpful.
One thought that I have, although I, I tend to agree with you, you know, in, in principle, um, but I know as someone who has utilized Renaissance, so I got to put my signature on a page, that said I recognized all of it, you know, and I think it's one thing to have an exemption that, that you've signed your name to, uh, it's another thing entirely to have potentially have planned all of your expenses for the next year or two, and put in what you thought were reasonable tolerances for everything, and all of a sudden, just get, you know, going on, so I guess, you know, and then after this, I'll drop it, but it, it seems to me like, it sounds like it's the opinion of this commission and, and our professionals assembled here, that there's absolutely no chance that we could come to some kind of understanding with the state, or, or, you know, any of these entities to say, we, we recognize that we had improper valuations on our, on our properties, and here's the steps that we're gonna take to, to rectify that, and it just might take more than a year. There's no way that we could come to any kind of an agreement on that, it's not important, so, is that correct?
I follow you, Lucas, I'm all for you, and if we can get it passed the state for a year, I would have no problem at all. Now, I, I got an idea, there might be a chance, but not at all, I'm not sure.
No, and I don't want, you know, I don't wanna give people the impression that I don't believe people should be paying a fair share, I do. And I also don't wanna cede control over our, you know, taxing power and authority and discretion to, to the state, but I also feel this is, this is a substantial change for some, some people who really were not anticipating it, and I think that we ought to give some due consideration to any and all options that may be available to us. That's all.
This, the state has always made it very clear that, that adjusting individual property values is, is, it's a local thing, to county thing. But if you don't do it, it's the state, the state will step in, and the state does, just as you talked about, people making cross-board pitch in the ninety-three, or whatever that magic number is. It's unfair about that, it's people that are already over the value, or are gonna get over value, not much more. Unless you, unless you take the whole, the whole reappraisal, use it, it's, and, and get within that ninety, ninety to a hundred percent state will, I mean, you're done.
What I, what I mean to say though is, you know, we, we've got a list of the property valuation changes, and not, not only that, but we have the percentage changes. Seems to me like you could potentially go to a state agency and say, uh, what we'd like to do is break up these, any, any and all properties that have, say, a, a, a greater than twenty percent increase year-over-year, uh, we'd like to break that up into maximum increases of twenty percent. Or, or, you, I mean, we could put that anywhere, you know, that, that level anywhere, as long as, as long as it was agreeable to everyone, but that way, you're not having some people's property evaluations unexpectedly nearly double in one year, you know, that they would, they would catch up to that level in two or three years instead. And, and in that way, you're being systematic about what you're doing, saying we accepted the, the new valuation, and this is only affecting parcels that were, uh, we'll say grossly out of line with what their true value was. And I, I just, I'm curious to know if, if, if that's something that's doable or not, before, I, I mean, obviously, if, if forced to take a vote on making these changes, I'm, uh, I guess, because I think the alternative could be catastrophic, but I just wanna make sure that we're looking at all the options and have any.
Is that an option there?
Yeah.
I feel that I can't recommend that, because the law is that it has to get one percent market value, when you reassess homes or anything else, and over a hundred percent value is a percent change every year.
Sure. Is it, is it?
And then the township, the city's approved, that, you know, I just, uh, I, would I do whatever, I'll be yes, but my recommendation would be, uh, but, but I don't know, if you feel there's a couple of properties in particular, we could definitely just not approve those, and forget them again, or there's always the payment process to afterwards, um, but overall, there is a ton of the practices that we seem to have, then we'd get a lot of thoughts out of it.
Two hundred and thirty-four, is that what it was?
Two hundred and forty-four.
Do you like to say, except, if we put a note in there that we're gonna put, now, these properties have twenty percent increase this year, finish up next year, they won't accept that?
Well, we just have to have our sales ratio come in about nine, I don't know that they would, I don't know if they would audit or do anything, as long as that, that's the point.
So you said, when, when we reevaluate something, the law states you're supposed to get to a hundred percent, but this, so then how does that function then, in comparison with the sales ratio then?
Right, like when we're saying, when we're reassessing each house, but you may go through, and I see a house that, um, realized the basement's original, and the money change would increase on it or back. Um, when the homes are sold, they take the sale price versus our, our value, and calculate the sales ratio.
Yeah, well, I'm just looking at it from the aspect, so, so you're essentially saying that the values that we have in front of us, who present it in a hundred percent valuation, and it's state law states that when you reassess something, that you have to reassess it at one hundred percent.
Right.
So we can't, we can't just say, okay, that's a hundred percent, but we're gonna stay within the sales ratios, then? And get to ninety-three percent or something like that?
Well, you can, I mean, you can, you can make some adjustments, as, as long as your sales ratio gets better, you can adjust it up to ninety percent or higher, not over a hundred. The state isn't gonna look at it, if your, if your sales ratio is coming in after the adjustments. And what you take is the sales ratio, so we're at eighty, eighty-nine, or whatever we were at, we, we took a five percent increase on it. Are they at a hundred percent, some are, some aren't, I mean, that's why they give you a ten, a ten percent.
Present math is crazy, a lot of this is hard to handle, everyone.
But you're looking at an overall average, what you're looking at versus the sales. And you use that to adjust your property values for the next year, but there's a lot of complications. And you use that to adjust your property values for the next year, but there's a lot of complications that go with it because there's supplemental, supplemental abstract. When you do a reappraisal, you, you have to pull out any new construction, any new stuff like that, because that's not a part of the reappraisal. That's new construction, that's some, or if you have something that goes from exempt to non-exempt. There's a lot of things that come out of that valuation. But if you get your sales ratio within ninety percent, I don't know why, I don't know why the state would take a look at it. But you have to decide how, how is it fair to the, to the citizens of the whole county.
Right.
And that's the other answer you have to give. I don't believe the state, if you're not within that tolerance, I don't believe the state would be able to have a chance to do twenty this year, twenty next year. I mean, I can't, I can't talk for the state's court utilization, but that's history, it's showing us. They're there to take it accident based. They're gonna take you up this percentage to get you within that tolerance. Problem is, is that then you've given up that ability to adjust the indices of parcels. Because even the overvalued parcels, they get the same twenty percent.
Yeah, I probably know what I'm looking at, or maybe it would very bad.
I'm just asking, essentially asking the question, I mean, is it, is it feasible not breaking the law essentially to, to say something like, we're going to make a two-year step? As long as the first year step gets us into the sales ratio, percentage of ninety percent.
Yeah, if you're over ninety percent and you're commercial overall, the state isn't able to, you know. You're at seventy-some percent and you know you've done reappraisal and you aren't putting them in place. And they're gonna jump up there.
Yeah, that's completely reasonable. I'm, I'm just, just coming from the aspect of trying to work a solution between saying, we, we know the values are okay, we're nowhere a hundred percent. It's just a matter of saying, can we incrementally make the change? But at the same time, still meet all the guidelines that we need to. I mean, and I understand that by, by making that change and not saying we're going to a hundred percent right away. You know, is it, is it fair to everyone across the county is the question, obviously. You know, because then you're saying we're, we're undervaluing properties, but I, I would, I would lay back on the argument that then if that's the case, we undervalue properties all the time simply because when we get a sales ratio study and says we're eighty-nine percent, we don't go to a hundred percent. We go to ninety-three or ninety-five percent. So if we, if we hypothetically were able to say this is a hundred percent true full value and then we dropped it and said, okay, we're just gonna go, we're gonna make that incremental step in two years, we go to ninety-three percent the first year and then go to that a hundred percent the second year. We would still be making the move, we would still be within parameters, we would still be doing what we're supposed to be doing. But we would buffer that change a little bit for the people so the taxes wouldn't ramp up like crazy the first year. They'd still be doing that without a vote. But it would, it would buffer that move a little bit. I, I'm, I'm not saying this is what we need to do, I'm just trying to work up these hypotheticals, we make everybody at least have the discussion, because this is where we have to have the discussion, not the estimation, you're correct, so.
Is that doable?
Yeah.
Hasn't been done in a while, so. Yeah, we have video files, because all the reports are due June third.
Any further questions, Travis? Well, we have a motion up there, so any further questions, discussion?
Is there anybody online that has any questions or anybody's? If you could go up there and ask them that? I'm not saying we shouldn't do this, the only way that I could see us coming up with any kind of a system that'll make nobody happy, like what Adam's saying. It would be if we, if we tabled this and called a special meeting between now and our next meeting. And in the meantime, put tax office to work with and see if it's possible. I'm not saying we should do that, I'm just saying that as far as I can tell, that even the way we could go about putting something like this into place in the timeline that we've got.
Well, I think by, if we're sued by statute, we'd have to make a decision today.
All these valuations have been approved through township meetings and city meetings and, and everything like that. Is there more than an ample people that have been objecting to these from the outset, Professor?
It's still great because they're not contacting me. And you're willing to definitely look at the properties again. I don't think, I can really have any, anyone came to the B I G one township that had two people there and that was it, all the meetings. So it's hard to work with anything when you don't have anybody contacting you.
Yeah, and I understand that, I've only been contacted by one person. And directed back to you and the value on that property was adjusted accordingly downward quite ways to make it. I mean, I don't know if he's happy with it, but it was adjusted accordingly off of, off of the separate companies. That's all I've, so. Maybe you're right, maybe people aren't coming because we're gonna do what we're gonna do, but at the same time, I mean, we provide this opportunity for people to come make their case. So I was, I was kind of in all honesty, I was hoping we had people here to make their case. I wanted to hear from more people, for there was concern.
If it don't surprise me, they're not here.
Well, I, I'm not saying it surprises me, but I was hoping, I'll be honest, I was hoping that we had, we would have had people here to make their case so we could have a that, get that portion of the discussion going.
We want to move forward? Well, man, it, it sounds to me like, like our concerns with this were probably too little, too late, given the alternatives that were presented with. And I don't know that there is a way to move forward except to approve it. So given that, I guess I, I call for a question.
Okay, question is good call. Um, yeah, I guess we'll roll call it.
Olson.
Aye.
Griff.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Lightburn.
Aye. Question properties are approved. Okay, next, onto the inundated land classification.
Sure, and that is page thirty. Um, this is just kind of a reality, it does, this is actually a state sign up, I always like to bring it, um, to be a, being part of a land and there's so many water, or have had so many water issues. Um, one thing to know is this year we only had twelve, partially twelve people sign up, and the year before was twenty-two, so less than half people, half of the people typically would, would sign up, sign up this year. With that, I don't have this on as a promotion or that because, but I'd like to address it. We had no soils committee complaints this year either. So that was interesting, so we didn't have to approve anything that the soils committee did. So we had less inundated land applications and no soils committee.
What are all of those due?
Sorry, what's that?
Where are, where are all of those due?
March thirty-first.
But it got lost in the, in the COVID or something.
I don't know, it's, you know, we've seen less and less of the soils committee each year and it kind of probably worked its way out somewhat from when it started. And so many, that's part of it.
Okay, so I guess then we would need a motion to approve the inundated land list?
So, flagging.
There are motions, a second, further discussion. Here, now, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same time, motion carries. Okay, A-line values.
Um, that's page thirty-one, let's see if we know that I received from the state each, this, this January. Uh, we came in at ninety point one, so we are compliant. Typically, like to say a little bit above, I need based on any changes to skew that number. So I just put down to discuss a motion for a one to four percent change. And I do mark on your papers what's at B-line, we were at six thirty-five point eighty-six last year. The state's saying that you get seven oh, seven hundred and five dollars and forty-seven cents. And then over on your side, you can see what's one percent, two percent, three percent will change. What that would change the A-line values approximately.
Okay, questions?
So the, the six thirty-five eighty-six, that's at ninety point one percent, right?
Yes. Last year it's a percent increase. That was exciting.
With all the rolling averages, working on that, a little bit of average, and I think they roll out, are, are we looking at continuing to see an increase in valuation or are we gonna start to level off? Because we are gonna start taking some of the tougher years to equate.
I think when Representative N D S U came in, I kind of asked him, and he thought that we'd still be seeing an increase for a year or so. But that's something we would adjust.
So the six thirty-five is in compliance?
Yes.
Make a motion, maybe to adopt that.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the six thirty-five eighty-six. Correct. Okay, we have a second. No increases. Okay, we have a second to that one.
Sorry.
We have a second, we have a discussion on the other.
One concern that I would have that would be if we don't have any increase, do we have a big increase along the road sometime?
It won't be.
Won't be.
Okay.
Don't take that with me.
You don't have your crystal ball or?
Oh.
Okay.
All right.
All right, go ahead, we got a little.
Oh, sorry.
That's, uh, any motion for the discussion? All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same time. Motion carries. Okay, sorry, Beth.
And the, the last three pages, thirty-two through thirty-four are just disinformational. These were the exemptions or credits that were approved first, communities homes that credit, once again, that's the same course. Five-year holder, hold disabled, twenty percent disabled. We have the veterans exemption, and then property exemptions, which are bigger than you are, they're not qualified to round.
So do we need to approve those or those are just ongoing?
I think they're ongoing, we would include any of those in that meeting.
Okay, uh, is there any more business to come from the board of tax equalization?
I, I just wanna say thank you to all of you, you guys do a very, very difficult job for this community that doesn't garner you a lot of, of thanks. And I appreciate you sitting and listening to my questions, which probably made no sense, but I did my best to put them in there, so.
I will, I will take you back on, back on, and thank you for everything that you've done. Okay, there's no more carries, follow up? Yeah, we'll need a motion to adjourn this committee and then reconvene at the Board of County Commission.
Sorry, go ahead.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the County Board of Tax Equalization, we can read the management. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same time. Motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Let me see, I'm a citizen. Okay, uh.
Yeah, it's working.
A little play off here, I'll let them lose. Okay, one last thing, uh, I think, right? I'll do it then, yep. Uh, discussion on COVID nineteen. It should have been the draft document that was worked on by the opening committee in front of you, or I should say, it would happen. Thank you. Um, basically, uh, the committee met again last, last week something, I don't know, I'm losing track of days. Thursday, Monday, something like that. Um, uh, I, I had this draft document, we took a look at it, I got feedback from, uh, the committee. We added a few things, anything that's underlined is a change from the initial document that we had put together. So we, we put in a, a section, essentially, or some sentences about if something were to happen with the, you know, if all of a sudden we got a hot spot or something in the courthouse to allow for, uh, Commission Chair in consultation with emergency manager of public health and all department heads to make operational changes if we need to, uh, on short notice, and we create a commission meeting. Still trying to follow that same N D S U guideline of ten in attendance or less when possible for meetings. Obviously, commission meetings, if we're gonna do it in person, we might have more than ten in the room, we have a large meeting room here, so we're social distancing and meeting those guidelines. Mask usage, uh, requiring mask usage just for when we're dealing with the public or if we have people riding together in the same vehicle, because that would be unavoidable for social services staff as well as highway department, I'm sure, in certain situations. And you said you're, you sent an email back, said you're, you're running out of masks, so we're gonna have.
Okay for masks.
Okay for masks, yeah, okay.
We don't have this effect.
Disfecting, so we're gonna have to get, you know, and, and again, procurements is gonna be a continuing problem. We, we talked about this, it's, it's tough to get all the things we need. But essentially, so we put some guidelines in here saying that screening protocol and stuff like that will go into place if we can procure the things that we need to make sure and make it happen. If not, we'll do, you know, for instance, on the screening protocol for the employees coming in every day, we'll just do the, the regular checkout screening protocol, we just won't do the temperature portion. You know, uh, we're gonna have hands having other company in the building, stuff like that. Try to write reminders to people that, you know, if you're in new business in the building, go to the office you're going to. You know, don't go be following the calls, we don't have to. Basically, that's, that's what it comes down to. The thought process of the committee, we didn't have necessarily a, a specific date in mind to, to soft reopen, or to reopen, I should say. Other than to say that, obviously, we have election next Tuesday, so not to confuse people. Uh, we should probably wait till after election. My thought was probably that following Monday, and then that would give us two full weeks of being open and operating previous to the courts are beginning in the beginning of July, I think they're gonna start trying to do roll up and start working out things like that. So that we can work out anything that we have issues with, things like that.
So Monday through fifteenth?
That was my thought at least, I don't know how the commission feels. That puts us out past election. If you look at the numbers, we've been decreasing unpositive cases every day. I, I feel safe, at least from my perspective, and, and trying to put something together so that the employees are fully safe coming back from the building. Department heads are still gonna have to work with, um, anybody in their department that maybe has an underlying health condition, things like that. We might have to work with those kind of things to try to make, uh, you know, so maybe still obviously work alone if we can for those people, if we can still make it work. We're gonna try, it's, it's gonna be a case by case basis, and the best we can, I think, in those situations.
I'd make the motion that the Ramsey County courthouse reopen, resume, uh, normal operations as delineated by the reopening document that you helped design as of June fifteenth, if I didn't already say that.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Everybody happy with this?
They're not.
I, I've, I've heard back from, we shared with all the department heads. I've heard back from probably four or five of them, and most of them were just adding little things to it, saying, you know, how their department is operating, things like that, things that we maybe make. But no real obvious changes, everyone was saying, no. One second. Okay, we have a second, further discussion. Would you probably?
You probably said that, that what, what would decide them, is how they're, is taking temperatures?
If we can get them, we'll do it, but if we can't, we're, we can't find them.
Yeah, they're on, they're on order.
Yeah, they're on order, but, so, in the meantime, we'll just do the screening questions, you know, have you, you know, do you have, are you feeling ill, all of those, you know, the standard protocol questions that we put together? Just to make sure when people come to work, they're feeling fine and things like that. Social distance, when at work, like you said, you're trying your best to do, but in your guys' department, it's probably, you're in the sheriff's department, sheriff's department, probably the two hardest ones that are gonna, gonna have problems with it.
I have a thermometer, we were able to get one upstairs in the court, for the courts, but it's literally sitting there because we don't have anybody coming in, so it would help, we could leave it on the first floor, so if you wanted to screen people there instead of dip up to the courtroom.
What kind, what kind of thermometer is it?
Point the forehead, push a button, I don't know.
Our thought process was, we were gonna provide every employee, at least in the committee, was to try to provide every employee with their own, so that way we don't cross-contaminate or have to wipe stuff down in between, stuff like that, but.
But you, you tell me, you pick up the bottle of stuff, you touch the bottle, and then you're cleaning your hands, so you're constantly.
And it might be the, what I have ordered, might be, um, the department head will have, or at least get one.
Yeah.
And then maybe down the road, when they keep making, they keep sending some to the US, you get more.
Yeah, in, in all honesty, too, I think checking temperatures isn't a bad idea, but at the same time, like we've talked about in the meeting, in our, uh, committee meetings, a lot of the people have been afebrile, afebrile. The fever doesn't necessarily indicate, it's just another thing to look at. So, uh, it might be an option, you know, but thank you for, thank you for helping. Yeah, well, the, the, the main concern is, is if we have one person screening a bunch of people, then you're breaking social distancing for that one person to everybody, and then that's another matter, so, yeah, it's, it's, it's not simple, but we're gonna just try our best to operate the best we can, and that's all we can ask for at this point, and we'll see how it works.
Do you want the visitor log? Can you start with those log? For each office?
Yes. Was there a question? We're gonna keep a visitor log in each office, uh, and we'll start, we can start, we'll ramp this, that's why, another reason, we can kind of ramp up over the next week and a half to get the guidelines in, in place as best we can, and we're gonna try to keep a visitor log in each, in each office, so that, you know, at least you know we've been in contact with, and stuff like that, so we can, so we can trace back and keep me, and stuff like that. One person per office at the desk, then we'll have chairs in the hallway to social distance, so you can only have one person in the office, and we'll common sense stuff like that. Wear masks in the hallways and stuff for the employees, just to keep them fully safe. So we'll have to procure some more masks for everybody, and things like that, but at the work desk, when it's just within, uh, between employees, if they wanna wear a mask, if they can, if not, they're okay. We're not required, but the CDC guidelines, basically, are stating that you should wear a mask at all times in any kind of office, public office. Uh, but, within common areas, I should say, CDC guidelines, so in common areas, we always, uh, elevator, etc. I think that I have a whole technical lab back from department, so I don't know if that means they hate it, they don't wanna tell me they hate it, or they are okay with it, I don't know which one that is.
I might, there, there may be a few, um, things that aren't always supplied with, I don't know if we're gonna get in trouble for doing that, but let's just say we're all having lunch, and we're, we're staying six feet apart, but we're not having our masks on.
Oh, and in a situation like that, as long as you're social distancing, that curve is gonna, I, the, the whole point of the document isn't to, like, we're cracking down on people, it's just, let's try our best to keep everybody as healthy as we can, follow the guidelines, and then, you know, essentially provide certainty on how we're gonna handle things, that we're gonna, you know, we're gonna do these certain things to try to keep people safe. To me, I mean, it, it's, we're trying to provide peace of mind to the employees as well, so that, that's the bottom of us.
And a part of it's a mindset of the employee, I mean, you know, they someone who feels safe doing what they're doing today.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I understand just as much as anyone, all tough social distancing is, I mean, I farm with my dad, my uncle, and trying to keep it six feet away from him, where you're trying to farm is virtually impossible, we try our best, but, you know, I don't wanna get them taken any further. But on the sa, on the plus side, like I said, the state numbers have been tracking down really well, and, and everything that seems to have been put in place up to this point has been working pretty well, so it, it's, it's, it's working in the right direction.
So I have a question for you, just in the sure, the player on the, um, for department heads, they can determine, as long as their office is from the, the opening day on the fifteenth, can they still stay or schedules with their employees if they can have the opportunity to still telework or?
Yeah, I, I think that, I, I, we don't wanna micromanage the department heads, I mean, that's gotta be, each department head, how it's gonna functionally work for your office, if you wanna stay your schedules, but my thought is, though, that if we're gonna have the building open, if you have a two-person apartment, at least one person should be there. And then they can stay here if they still want, but, like, I talked with, uh, Beth last yesterday, and she said that they come back to the office simply because they need their computers, it doesn't make sense to go back if they, if they just want it. Plus, they can social distance themselves just fine. So my guess is that, you know, we, most people are gonna come back into the building to work, I mean, in all honesty, I think most people wanna get out of their house and come back to work anyway, to be honest, kinda like Bill was talking about, sitting at your house for six weeks, they make you go nuts every now and then, so as long as we're taking the proper precautions as best we can, that's all we can ask for. But yeah, I mean, if, if there's still those options where, um, you have somebody with an underlying health condition or something, and they wanna work for a moment, we can provide telework options, and they're still getting no work accomplished, yeah, of course, if that department head ceases fit, we'll, we'll still allow that, and in all honesty, I think social services will probably still be functioning like that for a while, just because they're eligibility workers to work for a moment.
That was my name.
Yeah, and I, I haven't talked with her, but I was gonna visit with her a little too, because when they start getting back into the building, then, like we talked about at, uh, committee meeting, we're gonna have to discuss the possibility of maybe converting.
Contractions to be given, so if, if initial injury or contractions are coming, we're required, that's one of our, our.
She must be talking to somebody else.
Oh, Rowdy, you're there!
I, I unmuted her, unmuted her.
Oh, just a second, Rhonda. Are you, is she unmuted now?
She's unmuted.
I didn't know you were there, you scared me, you were like Alexa talking to yourself.
She might be talking to somebody else.
I hope she's talking to somebody else.
Okay, can you do me a favor?
Mute her. I was like, let's go on out here, anyway, um, yeah, go raise your hand.
We were talking about.
Either way, um, I was gonna talk with her a little bit, because when, the, the two departments, I see this other than the sheriff and the highway department affecting the most, and they're gonna be functioning the way they have to function, because you gotta each. Um, are social services and public health, simply because they're the two, uh, operations that are probably packed in the most, and they can't social distance in their office space very well, whereas a lot of our departments are two-person departments, and they got a lot of space, so we're okay that way. Uh, state's attorney might be kind of the same way, your office is kind of packed in there too a little bit.
We are, um, I had them starting on Monday, that's just working on the jury trial, the office, our office, the schedule. Court system is gonna have jury trials starting in July, um, they're working on a bunch of rules and considerations for the amount of people that have to come in and what, differently, uh, I can go ahead and talk a little different, there is nobody wearing masks right now, um, heavy underwear or, or in courtrooms. Most people through the month of June, at least, have been directed to appear by telephone unless something else is occurred that requires in-person.
No, our plexiglass arrived yesterday, we'll have them up this week.
Kevin, I think, was building something for our plexiglass.
Ooh!
At our office, between the two, there's two that are very cool, so we can treat them in our office.
So you're, you're gonna put a plexiglass barrier?
We are, um, we're gonna keep them on skids, skittles for a while.
Well, that's what, that's what the CDC guideline is.
See what happens.
Okay, good, yeah, so we might have to look at maybe something like that for some of the social services too, just because they're still packed, tightly packed in for public health. Um, or, the only other thought was, we got a lot of meeting space, we could maybe decamp people down to maybe, like, the historical meeting room or something, and social distance them in there, and set up their office space downstairs, if we have to, well, we're gonna have to be flexible.
Yep, and we, I think, have to also, maybe reserving some of the rooms downstairs to jurors, so they can be.
Yeah. The, the old, the jury rooms are not very big, are they?
They're not conducive for social distancing.
And, yeah, Judge Paudy had sent me back an email about that as well, that they probably, they might have to utilize this room, or one of the other meeting rooms, or maybe or something, where they can social distance when they're doing deliberations, so. It's gonna be one of those things where we're all just gonna have to kind of be flexible, and figure out it, figure it out as we go along, I guess, but this gives us a guideline to start from. Further discussion. Okay, we're done, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same time? Motion carries, and the plan is adopted with a start date of the fifteenth of the or start date according to certain plans in place, something like this. Uh, visitors? Will be on the phone. Okay, um, portfolios, anybody have anything interesting to add? I guess if you go around, I'll start, start over there, Commissioner Fred. I'll work our way down the line, how about that?
Not a lot, you know, it's, uh, been pretty quiet. Airport authority, I think everybody heard that we had, I think, uh, it was fourteen or seventeen passengers in April, or haven't seen the final results from May yet, but, um, and essential air service, in order to get those payments, we still have to have one flight a day. Um, so, they adjusted that, they're not doing two a day, but, um, but they even have a, uh, commercial jet coming in in six days a week, I think, if you want. Carrie's been good. And, uh, NDSU extension bill gave that report, uh, state outlets, uh, started yesterday, uh, the west end started full force, two hundred and fifty cubic feet per second, the east side's opening up today at eighty, so. I don't know if anybody was sat in on that, totally advisory meeting with us, but, um, I have made a motion to operate pumps with, when possible, given the constraints of upstream, downstream kind of thing, and, uh, and, um, they didn't, uh, they didn't pass that, they wanted to stay, stick with a well, it, uh, it didn't have the enough votes to get passed, because I don't think that committee has the authority to set an elevation. You know, if you look at the century code on, and I pointed that out to them, it's an advisory committee to give their recommendations of operations on the outlet, not to set an elevation for when they should reevaluate their operations, but, um, so hopefully they continue to operate those, and, you know, the elevation were really set when they designed and engineered and installed those outlets to the elevation where they're at. So, why not operate them to their capacity when possible, um, because, I don't know, the budget's gonna be there for them and continually. Um, I think the state's gonna be looking really, really hard at, uh, some numbers, um, you know, that water commission budget is derived from rail extraction tanks, and, and they're looking at a big, big reduction in their funding for, for administration and project costs and cost shares and everything else that goes along with that, so, um, operate the, operate the pumps where there's money there. That's all I have.
Okay.
Um, fair board's been pretty quiet, nothing going on, Peter's still, you know, sheriff's office is up, has both the new employees working. And, uh, the LAC count has been really good, it's been up in the eighties and nineties. They're bringing in a lot of.
A lot of outside.
A lot of outside, yeah, it's all outside.
That's good.
Yeah. All right, that's what I'll go.
Yeah, the, uh, the LAC's gonna add to the action next month.
Yeah. If they don't cancel again.
Okay, Lewis?
Guess the recorder's retiring, and, uh, Lisa hasn't fired me, so.
All right, uh, I don't have anything to add, I don't think. Nothing, nothing, uh, nothing big, that's for sure, just chugging along, I don't.
Uh, may I have any comment, right away, issue?
Uh, yes, uh, I talked to him about it, he said he would put together a, uh, he, he had actually watched the meeting, and he said he would put together a proposal and bring it to us for our next meeting, and then we can discuss it. I think, uh, I, I can't speak to what the proposal will be, but, um, just talking with him, it sounds to me like he would like to maybe try to purchase everything outside the right of way, we would be looking at that. So we can totally retain all of our right of way, and he can still accomplish the goals.
Go out, have a map together, sure.
Yeah, so he's gonna put the proposal on, we can probably get a map together, and stuff like that, but if, if he's, and I forgot to tell him, but I'm sure, I'll meet once he gets it together, we can get it on the chat. Uh, and then we'll, we'll vote that. Uh, before adjouring, I'd just like to say thanks to the staff for getting everything set up, all the electronics, and getting everything moved down here, and getting this decamped downstairs, and I know it was a task, so a big thank you for that, uh, and for the whole staff for everything, this has been a trying time the last few months, so, it's, uh, and everything, then run relatively smooth considering all the stuff we've asked of their staff, so, a big thank you, so. With that, there it is.